Alright, I'm doing roughly 35 minutes of deep test. And what we're doing is top-down analysis. That's the goal. So I want to go back. Roughly. So what you see here is the potential formation of the nearest order block is here. That could, if we're forming a gap, that could be used, um, as you have. This here. There's your, these are your discount. Discount, there's premium. Go down to a week. You have any context? Do you have gaps here? Uh, now this already shows that we made it because it's on Monday, I guess. Yeah, whatever. So, um, if you go down on the daily, then what you'd expect to see happen is, uh, hope to see happen would be like a test down like that. Oops. That. Uh, but it's achieved on the first day of Monday, which I already saw that before. So, um, now you, you need a new context to form. Get here. So either we gap, test down and go higher, or, um, we come to the weekly and then go higher. That's now Wednesday. Okay. So we've now formed a gap. So now the expectation would be. You do have a daily gap above a weekly gap. See that? So if we don't get a sharp turn, um, so you have two possible scenarios. There's one that goes all the way down to here and then back. So you have to be really careful about that. Alright. And then that gaps. So now your, your context is inside of this. Go down to four hour. Gap inside that. Was one on that day, which you know, there's no gaps. There you go. Then the expectation would be. Dive into that as overlapping and go higher at least to here and then to there. It's price, not time. There it is. Boom. Delivered. So, uh, now the monthly has been delivered. So let's go back out to the monthly. The monthly has now been delivered. Crap, I didn't see all that. Yes, I do. Hour. Where it says is. Okay. Okay. So now you go, um, the, the monthly target has been taken. So does it want to keep going to premium? And if it does, then that's, that is your new target. Um, and your closest, uh, discount on the monthly would be here. Okay? So we'll get rid of that because I don't technically know that's happening. Go to the weekly. And has it blasted through that? Yep. Weekly. And do we have a gap forming? We don't have any gap except for down below us. Um, so we don't really have a context. If we go to the daily. Okay. So on the daily, we do have a context, but we are already at. We are already at the monthly. So the question is, is if we are going to go higher, then we'd want to see, probably want to see a weekly gap, but I don't know. So we're just going to, we're just going to work this out. The expectation would be, um, that that's a breakaway gap. And you're going to come down here, go up there. Okay. So, um, now with, with candle science, that's saying we've closed above. If it is going to come down in here, it's not going to come very, very far down into it. So, um, what you would look for is a test into that. Alright, and that's an inside bar. So we're pausing at the very top. And I think you just, you just wait. Alright, so it's melting up. Um. Is it Monday? Um. Alright, so now we should, let's go back up to the weekly. Um. Then we are in December. Do we start? All December. Okay, so, um. Right, so we were in the first week. Uh, we don't know where the month is going to go, but that's the next draw on liquidity. Uh, if you go to the monthly, where the? Yeah. Oh, so weekly. Do we have a weekly gap? We have the start of one. Um, so your weekly arrays, where's your closest weekly arrays? They're the same as where the monthly is. A little closer. So expect to dive down into here. Um, if you wanted to look a little lower, you could say, alright, we could be seeing the formation of a, um, sharp turn there. So a test up, what we'd want to see is some candle science that says we're not going any higher. We're actually going to come lower. Oh, that's the weekly. That was a mistake. I didn't mean to do that. Okay, um, that's daily. Uh, so now we're at Monday, Tuesday. And we're down into the, um, we're down into the fair value gap. And the expectation would be that we would see a turn here. But now we go down into the, uh, four hour leg and we are waiting for. We, we want to see a turn here to, to run to the monthly target. Um, but that is a very large downturn. So what we will do is wait for the hourly. If we get a sharp turn off of this daily fair value gap. There you go. Now you get a ST plus re right there. Um. So will that run us higher? Does, uh, the question is, how does it? Okay, so this ST plus three takes out the hourly. But now where are we on the four hour? Okay. ST plus three works out and we make a new high. Where are we on the weekly? Getting myself a. Monday. Weekly. So we form. Okay, so see what happened there? So that is the whole week. And basically what happens is now, and this is a little bit harder to prosecute because I was looking at. Overdoing this. On the monthly, you have. Golly, look at that. Alright, so on the weekly, let's go back. The, the monthly target is the same. The monthly PD rays are exactly the same. They haven't changed. And so now you go down to the weekly and you say, well, you got a little fair value gap here that formed. But look at the candle science of the weekly. Candle science is that we closed well inside. So we took the high and closed well inside. So fair value. And, uh, let's go ahead and look inside that and see what it was. I know that that had that big four hour down bar. That is the formation of a four hour, um, order flow leg. Boom. Boom. There you go. Confirmed order flow lower. So the expectation would be then you're going to get to the monthly target. More than likely, you're going to get that this becomes a protected high and you're going to get to the monthly target low, the monthly discount. If you go back to the weekly, that's exactly what happens. Let's go back to the daily. Um. What does that look like? The daily looks like, ah, see? Okay, so. How does it get there? You have that big leg down that gets into the daily. Gets into the daily, which then swipes the high. And then shows. Closes inside, closes once outside, closes inside, and then closes as a reversal with no gaps. So you're failing to gap here. So we're not pushing, no one is pushing this higher. So then, then the expectation is that you're going to return down to the, um, fair value gap or the, the PD, monthly PD ray. And if we are going to turn there, then what would we expect? You'd expect respect. But now you're seeing respect inside of this. And now we can go down into daily to the. So like that. Go down to that into the four hour. Hour. There you go. So as soon as you see a. Boom, right there. Late. She takes off. So that's now a new week has formed. Go to the day. Happened. But we've bounced off of the monthly and. Created a fair value gap. The expectation would be. That you would test into this fair value gap. Get to the monthly. Contractors are affecting me. And we would use the weekly boundaries to do that. Holding, holding. See that? Stab down into it and you have overlapping arrays here. You'd expect that to hold. Before that gets taken out. Boom. I, 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 I can see how difficult this is because you have to really. You have to really separate. Alright, I need to pause this. Okay, so now the monthly context is met. So we are, now we're the, we're at the 20th of the month of January. And we've met the monthly context already. So if we're going to continue higher, we're going to need a new weekly context. Which means there's nothing really for us to do except for to expand the weekly context, uh, up to here, to the all-time high. And, um, note the weekly context, which would be the order block below us, um, right there. That one's closer. So it seems to me that's the more likely thing for us to go to. We also have a weekly and monthly gap below us. Um, so if we're on Tuesday. Then, uh, what do we have? We would need the formation of an order block or a gap. We do have one. Um, so is that gap going to get us there? Unlikely. Which means we're going to need to return to the order block and possibly take this, uh, weekly low here. Yeah, in order to, um, in order to, um, for us to go higher. So. In that way, by the way, you can watch this at double speed and I think you're going to get the value out of it. The order flow is confirmed bullish. Um, so let's see what happens on the daily. Okay, so now there, now you have two gaps and the formation of a weekly gap. You also have a gap out of a fair value area, but it does not have to come back to here. And if it does, it shouldn't gap through it. Um, so I think reasonably we could be looking for a test into here with the intention that it will take out 64. Um, and this is, make this is. Um, alright, so. You have a very large run higher and then. Look at the, uh, close inside the, back inside the range. So that indicates we're likely to come back down here to this overlapping area. It is now Thursday. We're inside the range. My expectation would be that we would run out this high here and then come back down. Uh, we do that candle science says that we're going to come down. It is now Friday. So chances are we're going to. Open up with a gap down in the following week or we're going to go lower. But we don't. We actually run out the high one more time. So now we have a gap, a weekly gap below us. And we can move that. You just kind of start back again and go do the weekly. And you have a gap, weekly gap. The expectation is it's going to reach towards the monthly. Alright, so if we go down now, I see that it did something. So back to down to the day. Um, and we open up on Monday. Is it going to do this? Monday opens up. Now my expectation was is that it was going to come straight down and then go up, but it didn't. It actually went up first, which. Which indicated to me, if it goes up first, it means it's taking this liquidity to get back down here. Um, so we're going to want to see a candle science on the daily. Hey, close back inside. Okay, now this is very interesting. Note this, that we took the high and then closed inside. Took the high, closed inside. Um, so now the likelihood is that we come down here, right? Uh, Tuesday, this would be a Wednesday low of week profile. Boom, Wednesday low of week. So we are hovering above a high timeframe. Array for a week and two days. We dive into it. And now what we want to see, we'd want to see, um. Note the candle science. At a Monday. We are closing inside the fair value gap. So I would think that what we do. It's actually, we swipe this low. And then make our way up. I don't know if we close this, um, in one day or not. Uh, but we would want that to close quickly so that there's no resistance to get up there. We close in one day and actually we don't even swipe the low. So that's interesting. Let's go look at what that looked like Wednesday, Thursday. Let's go look at what that looked like here. To make that, that to where it was not going to go any lower. So we closed at the end of the day. Is that showing conviction for lower prices for it to take the whole day to get down there? No. That means, let's see, that bar opened at, or at two o'clock. So it did it all overnight. But that does not show a lot of conviction that we're actually going to go lower, much lower. That shows conviction that it just kind of finally got there. And it probably is out of energy. So if you go, we have, we're, we're in the day, weekly rather. And we have no context here. So we're, what happens on the, on the hourly? We, and you go back to the four hour, notice this. You go back to the four hour, there is no gap to work with. So you go down to the one hour. And what do you see? You see a lackadaisical way of getting down here and then an ST plus re. So by, um. Actually, excuse me, take that back. Take that back. Take that back. You see an ST, you do see that. And then there is no. I don't see any apps. No, no gaps, um, that actually get formed there. Um. There any, ah, that is not what I meant to do. No gaps invert and no liquidity gets taken. So you basically are stuck with. It's not till noon before it finally takes off. And then again, low conviction, it's, it gets there by the end of the day, but it resumes the bullish context after taking that. I would say like on this day, this would have been tough to get aboard in terms of waiting for what you would expect it to see. Um, and there we go. So let's go back up to the day. And what's happened on the day, we, um, have a order block below us and then the high. So will we go down and test into the order block? More than likely we will. And again, we could do, we could do that. Say, I want to see what that looked like. Go straight down to the one hour. What did it look like to test into that order block? You get a 10 o'clock ST right off of the daily order block. And away she goes. What did that look like on the 15 minute? Eight 30, we get a stab down. And then small gap and then another gap. So right at 11 o'clock is when it starts to go back and, and not look back. Back to the daily. Um, you stab into the order block and then you, the closest order array is here. Uh, hit the order block again. Candle science says we're closing inside and now we're not closing outside of this again. So probably. Says, don't get lower prices. It's an inside day, February 6th. Um, and no new gapping context, right? So we're just kind of melting up, so to speak. Um, alright, now we have a gap. And the question would be is that are we going to stab into that daily gap in order to go higher? We don't. We meet the monthly context without even stabbing into the gap. So. There you go. That's Thursday and then that's Friday. So now we have two gaps. So will this gap get retested? So back out to the week. Well, that's annoying. That. Yep, so we have, we do have a, um, weekly fair value gap here and we tested through that high. So it gave me the Monday. Alright, so we tested through the high. Why doesn't that show? Back to the week. Uh, I don't know where that's. Alright, so that's the same thing. So the question is, now if we go back to the weekly context and you have. Um. Monday gives you this, but let's go, let's go back to the. And at the, at the end of the week on Friday. You would have had this. Like. Right? And you would have had. Right, there's your weekly context. Um, so then let's go down to the daily. And say, alright, well, um, that one's closer. So what's our order flow on one hour? Um. Nothing that's giving us gaps. So I'm expecting that if we plow through this, then we should gap lower to get down to the weekly. Go to the hourly on Monday. Basically, that's what happens. You see a big gap up through it and a gap down. That's interesting. That's really interesting. You're at the monthly target and you're gapping through it and you have no expectation of going any higher. So gapping through, that's very fascinating to hear that. Say, I, I've got an hourly gap through a monthly array. But that's important. A substantial, that's like obvious, right? So then you say, alright, well, let's look at the four hour. Just make sure that we, okay, there's nothing on the four hour potentially, uh, uh, developing thing. But then what would we want to see? We'd want to see continuation from the hourly. Now we're getting, going to be getting into, there's Tuesday. Um, and then we don't get that one. And then basically in one day. Your weekly. There's your week. Okay, so you have a big down move on Tuesday. Which tests into it immediately. And actually that's interesting. So let's go down a timeframe. I'm guessing that would have been a stop out. You have a 15 minute array that takes you down and then your expectation is that it's going to come up into here. And if I want, if I want that array. Want to combine it with some. I want to find it with that right there. There, and now more, say, well, I don't want to try and take it when it happens. I want to wait for it to go and then take the pullback. Ends up being right there. And then I'm aiming for this, which happens at noon. That's very interesting because I guess I would have expected that all the moves that were really going to happen were going to happen at nine 30, 10 o'clock, 10, 10:30. But that's not what's proving out to be true. A counter move is at those, those times. Um, and then boom, now you're at your weekly target. You've hit your weekly target and it's Tuesday. So this is a Tuesday, Wednesday low perhaps. Back up to the daily. What happens? Massive rejection there. And now you've taken out the weekly high and the weekly low. Um, is it worth trading anymore? No, it's not. Um, then you've taken that out and taken out the weekly high. Nope, excuse me. That's not true. You haven't left a gap. Oh, interesting. This. On the daily, we couldn't get to the high. We got to the manipulation point and we let them off and then the gas came back the other direction. And now, and, and we did that on a Friday. So we manipulated through that same point again and then reversed them again. Took out the low. We've already traded this. So now we're just sideways. We're back through the high. We leave a gap. We do leave a gap. Here's your overlapping point where you just, it seems like obvious. If that gets tested, it should go higher. Missed it. So it missed it and it left a gap. They have a weekly gap here and a daily. Is it going to come down to the weekly? And again, you have your, what your. Alright. We go through it and go. We don't see, okay, look at the difference. Note, note the difference. We did go through that, but we didn't gap through it. So odds are good. We don't, we're not going to come that much further down, back down. Okay, so, um. Oh. Completely wrong. Completely wrong. Let's go back. Why is that? Afternoon. Afternoon. Okay, so there's no gap. Well, we didn't gap through it. And that's usually indicative that we're not going to continue. But when you do gap through it and you violate it, that's, um, um, a major sign of a, of a violation that you're going, that you're reversing. So. We didn't gap and then we turned around and formed a gap. So, so I guess that's, that's also true. Four hour formed a gap, uh, on Monday. Indication that we're going to go lower and then. Now we've gotten to the, so very likely we're going to go here. You'd expect it to go from there. It's disrespecting that. So is there anything above that timeframe? There is right there. So you have a four hour. So you don't, wouldn't think that that's one hour is going to hold when you got a four hour right above it. So you fly up through that, that looks like disrespect. So it's not going to get there. There's nothing up there. Nothing above. So it, it is telling you that it wants to go higher and then it's left a gap here. But now you got to think, alright, well, we're at. Now you got to think that we're going to go here to there and then, and then back through that. Monday, Tuesday. Sharp turn and we didn't, we, we didn't take any liquidity. Well, we kind of did right there. We took the start of the breakout. Now what did it do first? Did it go up first or did it go down first? And went down first. Down first and then up. So it went to a lower timeframe array. You get to a higher timeframe. Comes up, snatches this liquidity right here, one hour. Sends it down. Do the four hour. Sends it back up. The four hour, still dealing in the four hour. So let's just watch how that plays. That holds. On a Wednesday. But now you got a sharp turn, ST. What we're looking for now is a gap higher. But you get gaps lower. So, didn't that have been a protected turn? Does that create? That on the hourly. Took on the hourly, took a pivot and created, created, but it's got, it's, it's still down there. So it hasn't, no, I guess it didn't fill in. And it didn't create another four hour gap. So I guess you got to wait for it to see what it, what it's actually going to do. So. What we're basically monitoring for is a four hour gap. And what we're getting is one hour, um, one hour order flow. Into Thursday. There's Tuesday. There's Wednesday. So basically actually what's happening here is this is going sideways. Till Thursday, got a Tuesday low a week. And then we would expect that to go. And it does. Four hour gap. What did it need to do first? Break that all the way back down. In order for this to deliver to there, I had to take that out and then run down to what? I just want to solve this problem before I quit. My video is 34 minutes, even though it was a 20 minute time. Okay, so it needed to come down to. A, a one hour or one day order block. Or propulsion block, I guess you could call it that. Without testing. There is no weekly, there is no weekly. So it just stopped there. No weekly gap. You got to the weekly. Alright, excuse me. That's where I was wrong. That's where the mistake was, right there. You have a weekly order block right there, overlapping. Bullish order flow. Go down to the daily. What does that look like? You, do you have an order block on top of the? Weekly order block. Yep, right there. So we left it and then we're going to, we tested it and then we respected it. So then that makes sense that. Your, your long trade, when you're thinking about that. Three o'clock. You know, you're, it's already underway. You're just watching it. That is very interesting. We'll have to do this again.